Need the weather report on the recording.
There we go.
Okay, I'm calling the meeting to order.
Maybe you better not take this.
I have to say this first, that the meeting is being recorded and we ask that people identify themselves before they speak and what street they live on. Keith, what's going wrong with the weather?
You know what, I've been getting, you know, verbal threats. I actually had beer cans in my yard the other day. This is true. That's never happened to me before. I mean, that can't happen to the mayor of Martin's addition. I mean, one time when they put, and this is a true story, they put sugar in people's gas tanks on the street. I was the only one that was spared. But I've got my car, my Cadillac in the garage right now. You know, this is, you know, been kinda rough here. We had, last week, we had two days in the eighties. It was eighty-six degrees on Friday, on Saturday. On Sunday, it was at the same time, twenty-four hours later, it was forty degrees cooler. It was forty-six degrees. Anyway, um, looking ahead, things should, you know, slowly but surely get better, but it's not gonna get much warmer. It's gonna be more like fifties and sixties and chilly nights. For the, probably for the rest of the month of April, but by the time we get into May and into the summer, things will definitely get a whole lot better. They gotta be for our Fourth of July festivities coming up here soon.
And for also, we want good weather for the sidewalk.
Well, I'm working on that right now.
Okay.
I don't wanna make any promises because I did that when I proclaimed Old Man Winter, when I pronounced him dead in February. But the groundhog was right, so I yield to him. But we could be in Wisconsin and your old stomping grounds there where Green Bay has had more snow in April than in the entire last two winters put together.
Okay, I just want you to know I just came back from Wisconsin.
I know, I know that. You called me before you left.
Okay. No, there was a lot of snow.
I didn't see anything good happening there. I didn't mention that to you, Richard, when you called. But thank you and happy spring to everyone.
Thanks. Okay, anybody, uh, this is our opportunity for residents. Any issues residents wanna raise? Going once, going twice. Committee updates. Is Marty?
Thank you, and I'm happy to report that the election committee is doing well, doing our job well. We had the official election packet ready to go to the post office, to the printer in the post office, literally the morning after the nominations period closed, very fast. And Matt has been terrific, I want to praise Matt. Got to the printer fast, we now, I understand, do we have extra copies here today of the election packet that went from the printer?
I can print some off if somebody needs some.
I thought we had the extras from the printer?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, yes.
Yes, if you would pass those out, right, to anyone who would like to get a copy. And they're in the mailboxes and I understand that Matt has put a firecracker under our postmaster to get them delivered without a two-week delay this year, which would be very much an improvement. So, thank you, Matt, and the packet looks good. We do have one request for the council to make, we'll go straight to that. In the new updated rules and regulations, rules and procedures for elections, there is a provision, which is very handy, that allows the council to appoint temporary committee members as needed. And we are telling you today that we believe they're as needed because one of our primary committee members may be on work travel on election day. And a couple of the others of us have work schedules that are beyond what we expected and we can control. So, we have actually a request that the council approve two people, one of whom is here tonight as a temporary councilman. I would like to introduce somebody you know well, Naomi Neiman has volunteered. She was on the committee, of course, last year, so it's nice to have an experienced head back at the wheel here. And we would ask the council to approve her. The second person is still considering. If you have any suggestions of who would be a second good person to give us a hand, we're looking for, basically, you to approve two and to appoint one tonight. So, that is our immediate request. The only other thing is, do you have any questions for us? Everything seems to be on schedule.
I thought that your charter bylaws lets you take on temporary people in order to help with the election without council approval.
My understanding was the council needed to appoint them and that they would need to take the oath of office.
That's my understanding, yeah.
So, if you would appoint Naomi tonight, we'd be most grateful. And once again, we're gonna be, in terms of logistics, doing the election table and the engagement committee table will be nearby. Celebration of the sidewalk with the capable help of Matt and Tina. And we're rotating the names on the ballots as we did last year to prevent positional bias. The absentee ballot period opened three weeks before, which was yesterday morning. We've already had seven requests for absentee ballots and we filled five of them. The last two came as I was walking out the door. So, anyway, it seems, the machinery seems to be working well. And we credit the committee for that. And the only action that we have is, would you please appoint Naomi to assist us?
Yes. So, can I have a motion? What?
Yeah, that's right.
A motion for?
Double motion to appoint Naomi Neiman as a temporary member of the election committee.
Second?
I second.
All in favor? Pose, done.
Welcome, Naomi, and thank you. Any questions about procedures or anything? Okay, we're good, we're rolling. We look forward to seeing you all on May tenth, if not sooner.
Thank you. Nice report, and thank the committee also. They've done a lot of work.
Truly, they have.
Nice weather to go with.
Okay, uh, the minutes, uh, they've been approved by email. I just need a motion to approve them as they were sent out. So moved? Second? All in favor?
Gotcha.
Sorry, I seconded.
Uh, building administrators' report, Doug.
Just a few things to go over. We've been working with the homeowner at seventy-two-ten Chestnut about their new footprint for the house. Hopefully, it'll be coming in sometime this year. It's quite an exercise to get them to pick up the moment they wanna do, but we've, Matt and I have been working with the homeowners.
Is that the lot that was previously attached to another house, or is this different?
No, that was demolished this summer, and it's now vacant on Chestnut.
Got it. Where is that?
The homeowner at thirty-five-ten Taylor Street is repairing the wall that was damaged and it should be done, it looks like, about a week or so. And they've submitted a right-of-way agreement that Ron is working on, I believe. And two things to report on the roadways. The state has finally made the improvements to Brookville and Bradley. They came in, they redid the handicap ramps. They added some more asphalt to the northeast corner. And the other day, when it was raining, I didn't see any water ponding, but we'll keep an eye on it, so. But they did finally get it done. They didn't do what we requested and give us twenty-four hours notice. They just came out and did it, but it's done. And also, Montgomery County came out and repaired the two storm drain inlets out at Oxford and Quincy last week also. So, that should be completed.
Okay.
That's all I got.
Thank you. Any questions for Doug? Uh, financial matters. So, the treasurer's not here tonight. So, would somebody like to act? Oh, I can do this. Revenues, um... Revenues exceeded income by three hundred thousand dollars this past month. That we've allocated capital improvement funds up to one point five million and we have a reserve of one point three million approximately. So, revenues are running higher than expected. State income tax receipts could be more than a hundred thousand greater than originally budgeted if the current pattern continues. Meanwhile, expenditures are about seventy thousand. Expenditures are about seventy thousand, ten percent less than planned. Okay, so I need a motion to approve the treasurer's report as given.
I move to approve the treasurer's report as given.
Is there a second?
There's a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, then we need, uh... Do we need to review again the, or the budget to say what our tax rates are gonna be?
They've been put on the agenda for public comments, if there are any public comments. And then, there will be another hearing and votes to adopt at the May meeting.
Okay. Does anyone have any comments about the proposed budget and the tax rates for fiscal year eight, uh, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen? This is going to be open again for comments, as you heard Ron say, at the annual meeting on May tenth. Okay. The public hearing in action on policy three dash eighteen dash two. No, that's, those are the tax levies. So, this one is two dash sixteen two A, right? Election. We have adopted this on an emergency basis, but it can only be adopted for sixty days on an emergency basis. So, it is up again for adoption and also an opportunity for anyone who has comments on the election rules and procedures. Yes?
Marty, just that street. We very much appreciate the council's action that allowed us to proceed with this cycle of election, the emergency decision. And we very much support, as the committee, the final adoption of this, which I note has two amendments in it, and thank you, Ron, for doing it. One pertains to the committee members taking an oath of office, and we've all now done so. Ahead of you adopting the policy, we decided to comply in advance. And the other piece that is different than what was adopted two months ago is a provision about record keeping, which we also have been complying with for the last three years. It just never was written into the rules. So, we thank you for codifying, in fact, what is our already practice. And we think it's a great set of election rules, as we said earlier. It seems to be working really well. If we come back to you next year with any tweaks, they will be tiny because I think all the big stuff is done. So, thank you, and the committee supports the adoption of this final form of the resolution.
And thank you, and thank the committee. Is there any other comments? Is there a motion to adopt policy number two dash sixteen dash two A? Is there a motion?
I move to adopt policy number two dash sixteen dash two A.
Is there a second? Okay, all in favor? I oppose? Okay. Next. Public hearing on the charter amendments. I've asked Ron to handle those.
Sure. So, the proposed charter amendments, and there are seven of them, were introduced at the February meeting and discussed at that meeting and also at the March meeting. They are now ready for adoption tonight. We've also put them on the agenda. If there are any additional comments from residents, there's an opportunity to do so now. Given that we've discussed them the last two months, I'm guessing you don't want me to go through them all again.
Does somebody want them gone through one at a time so that there are comments to be made?
You went through them last time, and they sounded good then.
Okay, then we can move ahead, just by motions?
Yes, you could do one at a time or all, or all seven at once?
Let's try all seven.
Okay, the resolutions are numbers twenty eighteen dash one through seven.
I move that we adopt resolutions twenty eighteen dash one through seven.
All in favor? I oppose. Motion passed. Update? Yes. This is a two-year proj- four-year, three-year project.
Three, yeah, that's right.
So, update on the small cell tower legislation.
All right, I feel like we're moving way too fast, so I'm gonna try very slowly.
You get paid by the hour. No.
Good night, Ted.
Good night, Ted.
So, some of you may be aware that Montgomery County is revising its zoning regulations with respect to small cell deployments. These are basically boxes that can be installed on the tops of telephone poles or sometimes even buildings to provide better wireless coverage. The Montgomery County zoning text amendment currently under consideration by the county council mostly addresses commercial zones, but there is one change that impacts residential zones. Currently, there's a county setback requirement that requires these deployments, these boxes, to be sixty feet from residences. And the zoning text amendment would reduce that down to twenty feet. And some communities are opposing, some people...
Because?
Because they can present aesthetic issues and for some people, health issues as well. Although, I will say that the FCC has passed an order that states the local government cannot prevent a small cell deployment based on health issues so long as the deployment satisfies the FCC's standards for radio emissions. Because basically, the FCC has said that there's no good science on whether these are actually dangerous to the health or not.
So, would these be put like on top of telephone poles?
Mostly, yes.
Except in, at least in Martin's additions, it would be hard to do that and not be within sixty feet or twenty feet of a...
But, but yeah, now the county setback will be reduced to twenty feet, which probably is doable because if you think about a front setback, our minimum front setback is twenty-five feet.
Five feet, yeah.
And you've got, then you've got this right-of-way in the sidewalk, probably.
What are the, the reported health concerns?
Well, I'm certainly not an expert. Cancer, childhood leukemia, trouble sleeping.
Okay, and who?
But, but that's only one of the issues.
I was gonna say that, uh, one resident has emailed me with the, with concerns about, um, health. They, I can, I'll forward you the email that they had sent to me. But they had expressed some concern about moving it closer to residential areas for, for health reasons. Um, I, I don't recall exactly what, what they, what their specific concern was, but generally, it was...
So, it says that...
And this is, this is just a bit of background. I have to get to a much more important issue.
Well, in the meantime, could you tell us?
While the county, yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Well, I just wanna know what villages are opposing this and why before we get to the meat.
Yeah, the, the town of Somerset is opposing the reduction of the setback from sixty to twenty feet for, you know, aesthetic reasons.
Aesthetic, okay. Yeah, it's okay.
There are other municipalities that will be adopting their own regulations in order to require a permitting process for these deployments.
Make some money.
And imposing some basic criteria about, you know, how high the poles can be. Because there have been some communities, some in New York that I'm aware of, that had zero regulations and, you know, all of a sudden, a sixty-foot tower is planted in the middle of a residential neighborhood. And also, how big the boxes can be.
That would make it sixty feet removed though, right?
I'm sorry? Oh, right, yeah, more than twenty feet or sixty feet from the house, yeah, right, exactly.
Well, but I thought you said earlier this was for them to potentially add to existing poles. So, how could they build something?
Well, they can also request permission to install a new pole.
From us?
Yes. And so...
Would they need our permission?
Yes, but the wireless industry will argue that they have a right under state law to operate within our jurisdiction, and so we can't say no. We can only impose reasonable restrictions on what they can do. And so, some communities wanna make sure they have reasonable restrictions in place before they get their first application.
What's the status of the legislation?
Yes. Okay, so, the wireless industry wants to get ahead of local governments and so lobbied for a state bill to preempt local legislation and to prevent municipalities and counties from adopting their own regulations. There was strong opposition to that at the state level led by MML, Lindboardt at the city of Gaithersburg and the, um, Mako, Montgomery Association of Counties, no, Maryland Association of Counties. And the sponsor of the bill dropped it, so nothing's gonna happen this legislative session, but it could certainly come back next year. MML, Maryland Municipal League, is encouraging municipalities to adopt their own regulations so that when the state bill comes back, MML can argue this bill is unnecessary because municipalities are already regulating these deployments in a reasonable manner. And so, MML encourages us to adopt reasonable regulations, and they've provided some samples. The city of Bowie is probably most like us in terms of the samples that have been provided. They've also provided ones from Westminster and Brunswick who are a little different than us because they're outside the regional district and have zoning authority. But Bowie is in the regional district like us, and so that one is a good example. And that was drafted by Alyssa Levann, very good attorney, and she had assistance from a telecommunications attorney. Section...
We expect the legislation, not the preemption legislation, the actual legislation, to pass.
When it comes back?
Yes.
I, it's hard to predict. I, for the record, I would say no.
I, I would think that this being an election year makes, um, everybody a little more sensitive to community needs. We might not have that same sensitivity next year. Would be my concern.
And I'm currently working on a draft for section five in Somerset. I, I don't have the technical expertise to state what's reasonable in terms of the actual box itself.
Right.
So, I'm looking at Bowie's ordinance and doing some research and seeing if I can get a better grip on what would be reasonable. And so, you may have a free draft next month.
So, are you doing this cooperatively?
Unless you wanna share the cost with section five in Somerset.
Right, well, let them, yeah, let them take all the costs. No, we should share if there's, come on, they do all this with us all the time. So, we should share those costs.
And Bowie has done a lot of the work for us already.
Yeah.
All right, you would coordinate maybe with Doug to see what he knows?
Sure, absolutely, yeah. Yeah, and I was toying with the idea of maybe getting a consultant as well just to look over our technical specifications and, and give us a blessing. There's an organization in New York that's really on top of this issue that I was thinking might be a good candidate. I'll, I'll share with you that an article they wrote, really, it's a really good article.
As long as we follow all policies relating to consulting agreements.
Okay, yes, that's right, we have to bit it out.
That's it?
Yes, that, that's, it's it. Although, we've got plenty of time, what else can I say?
Right. No, but I wondered if anybody wanted to make comments about this? Going once?
Only that I've heard, you know, that the people do have health concerns where the, the cluster, was it microwaves or radiation or whatever? That the science is out on it, as you said, Ron, it's not, it's not conclusive. But there's enough cluster cancers that there is some basis for concern. It's not just, you know, weirdo conspiracy theory. There, there's some basis for that concern. So, my request would be, keep it as far from our houses and kids as we can.
Okay. Um, man?
Wow.
I bet you're not ready.
I can be ready?
Um, so, um, obviously, we have the new furniture. That's nothing new. We have received bids from a few different companies in terms of, um, painting, painting the walls and replacing the lights that have gone out. And I, I think we have, um, are, are prepared to recommend, um, a company so I can sort of, I can share with you, um, the different bids that, that we received. I, my thought was to wait until after the election to allow, because there are so many meetings in here that, um, smell of paint letting it dry, um, it might just make more sense to wait until right after that when we also have a longer break in between, um, meetings and, exactly. Um, Marty touched on, um, pretty much everything related to the election, so, um, just to add on really quickly, uh, I did receive a package from Spectrum Printing, who does our mailing, um, of the extra twenty-five or twenty-six, um, that we, we order every, every year just in case people wanna come in and get an extra copy or they lost theirs or whatever it might be. So, it was dated in the mail, going out yesterday. So, there's no reason why, if it doesn't get out on Friday, that, at least by Monday, and, um, according to the charter, it needs to be delivered by Wednesday, so that really should be no problem.
Good work to all of you.
So, um, we do have, we didn't hear an update from the Community Events Committee tonight, but, um, there are a couple of things, um, coming up the pike. On Sunday, April twenty-ninth, the village will be hosting a Small Arbor Day celebration. This will allow us to re-up our Tree City certification, which is a national certification given to different municipalities that, uh, have, meet certain criteria such as having a section of your code related to trees, things like that, and, and recognizes Martin's additions for, um, its green leanings. So, the, the, we're gonna plant the tree, which is a red bud, which was chosen by Dan Gardner's wife, Kirsten. Um, it was Dan's favorite type of tree, so we're gonna plant a small red bud in the butterfly garden, the, the week leading up to it, and then just have a small reception at Shepherd Park where, like, Paul is gonna talk about some of the trees that we plant, some of the criteria that we go through, what that process looks like, and we'll have some light refreshments. So, it'll be short and sweet. Um, and we will also, uh, we've also ordered a plaque that commemorates Dan's, um, many years as our tree supervisor. Um, then, um, the next, the next event is the election. But then, looking ahead even further, uh, we're gonna do another Fourth of July celebration like we did last year. So, um, we've met with, uh, the, the Community Events Committee selected somebody to be kind of the point person on that, so we, we met with them and have made some preliminary plans. I think instead of pizza, which we do as, uh, pretty much every event, we're gonna mix it up and do all-American hot dogs this year. So, hot dogs and french fries and we'll have a, uh...
Freedom fries.
Freedom fries, that's right, yes, of course, for Fourth of July. Um, we'll have a couple of rides, um, especially water rides, 'cause it's hot, summer. Last year, I think, was, was good, but we can build on it and make it even better this year. In terms of the Tree City, we were actually awarded, uh, a plant award. So, Tree City is a national certification. We were, um, given this plant award, which is sort of the equivalent in Maryland. So, um, thank you to... So um thank you to Tina for um taking the lead on that and um going through that process to, to get us that. Um, we were actually sent a nice plaque that may or may not be readily available. But so we can pass that around, it looks, looks nice.
Oh, very nice.
Carol Brown.
Um.
Twenty seventeen. That's nice.
Nice work, Dana.
Um.
And when the walls are done, we'll have a-
Yeah, we can hang up. Um.
And it's, it's whited, yeah, exactly.
Um, we are continuing to work on the village directory, so there's about eighty, eighty-five houses that we didn't receive any information. Um, we are coming to a point where um, you know, we, we just wanna get it out. So we sent out one last mailing to people to give them a chance, and then otherwise we're gonna send out our preliminary list. And I think I actually maybe shared with the election committee, we, we, we do have a, a, a running voter roll. And I, I finally heard back from the county as well, so they are going to get us um their information to cross-reference our, um, our, our list with them. Um, we have um been working with our accountant, so we are buying the bill dot com and we're gonna start integrating that in May. And we're also buying the QuickBooks application to run that concurrently. So we can um keep, keep track of uh the, the reports and stuff and actually be able to generate them in-house. Um, if Dan is out of office and um, you know.
Can I just say as you guys are doing that, attempt to keep track of how much time it's taking due to, because this is an additional duty that you're taking on.
Hmm, okay. Right.
And it's good for us to know, you know, what, what is the workload that's coming into the office with taking-
I think that uh in talking with Andy Harney on in section three, who does it, she, she estimated obviously certain times of the year, there's more stuff to do, so she said um around budget time, it could be anywhere from ten to even twenty hours when she's, when she's really working on it, but other-
Per week, per month?
Well, in those couple of weeks where we're really knee-deep in the budget.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but otherwise it's more along the five.
Well, and you, you might find efficiencies with the bill paying that's gonna come, but there's a ramp up and all that.
Yes, exactly.
But I think it's good for you guys to just be aware as you're taking it on, how much of this, how much of my day is being consumed by this stuff.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Um, we received a temporary replacement plaque for the centennial tree, so I'm sorry that Frank's not here to hear this. Um, 'cause this was a, a, a pet project of his. Um, so we have a temporary replacement plaque, the old one was um, was rusted. Um, and we've also bought a, a, a permanent replacement. So in the meantime, we have something that makes it look nice, but um we also have one that will withstand the weather and withstand the test of time.
That's coming.
Yes, yes, yep.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Um, so Doug and I are meeting with uh CNA this upcoming week um to go over the GIS and um go over what, what we need in terms of software or possibly hardware updates. Um, and anything else they might need to get us up and running so that they can begin doing their um surveys throughout.
And the GIS is our-
That's the graphical interface system, which is our mapping um that allows us to do things like calculate the front building lines. Um, know where the trees are, potentially inf- uh infrastructure such as water, sewer, uh gas lines, things, things of that nature.
Right. And it goes, it uses as a guide the village-wide survey we conducted maybe eight or ten years ago, six years ago, whenever.
Yes, exactly, yeah.
Okay. I just didn't know if everybody knew.
Yes, thank you. Um, we are also um in the midst of, um, we have an open invitation for bid to um trash companies. I have uh recused myself from that process, so Tina is taking it over. Um, my dad works for a uh trash and recycling waste, waste company. So um I disclosed that to the Ethics Committee and just for the sake of appearance of um eliminating even the appearance of impropriety, they, they, they suggested that I recuse myself and delegate that responsibility to, to Tina, so Tina is, is taking, taking that on. Um.
Tina, when do you expect that to be done?
Well, there's a, a deadline for the bids. Uh, what is it, Matt, do you recall that, it's May something, I believe?
I, I think it's the end of May because our contract runs out at the end of this fiscal year, so that would allow us.
So they have, just wanna make sure that we've got a good turnaround for that.
Yeah.
Oh, absolutely.
Um.
And it gives us time to evaluate the bids as well before the contract runs out.
Um, we've also ordered new village signs, so those are, I, I, um, they-
Saw them on the website today, thank you for the write-up.
Yes, yes, we post, posted that on the website for folks to, to see. Um, they're, they're actually somewhat similar to the section five signs um in terms of color. Um, so it fits sort of the aesthetic of uh the, the municipalities around here, but it does have our own little flavor to it. So I think those will be really nice. They um will be delivered to the company signs by tomorrow on May eighth. And they said hopefully within o- uh two weeks, um, from that point, they, they would be able to actually install them. Um, and so yes, just to re- reiterate uh what Tiffany said, if, if folks wanna take a look at it, it is posted on the website. Um, WSSC, it's sort of the same, same old story. Um, they still haven't selected a contractor. So we've drafted a letter that um we've planned to send to um some of our representatives in Annapolis. And then I, I also got the suggestion that we CC the Board of Directors for Du- for WSSC, especially the ones that are in Montgomery County.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because they, they might be more acutely aware of, of everything that's going on. Um.
Let's get it out when, when you wanna-
Just, just send it, okay.
I mean that-
Oh, yeah, no, I reviewed it, it's ready to go.
Okay, okay, then I'll, I'll send that out. Um, I also have requested and W- WSSC is, is looking into whether they can add our portion on to any active projects that are going on, which is actually what they, um, not WSSC, but what was done at Brookville and Bradley. They, they tacked it on to um an, an already uh ongoing project.
Do you know what's happening at the, the dog park kind of on Brookville Road South in Annapolis?
That they're digging in that one?
Y- yeah, they, they are, um, I, I, do you know anything about it, Ron?
I do not.
Um, they, I, I believe they're just re-grading it. Um, but they are putting certain restrictions on who can go in there once it's, once it's all complete. So I think they sent out um notices to some of the abutting properties. Um, and are still opening it up to Martin's Editions residents that are right there. But I think they, their plan is to make it a private park for Chevy Chase Village.
And will you need a tee to get in, is that?
It's not clear to me how they're gonna enforce that. Um, but that's what, that's what their plan is.
Um. I got something to say on that because I've got all the overload down at my house from that park. And I counted twenty-two dogs there the other day. Now, uh, nothing's gonna be done about that unless there's a complaint to the Maryland Park and Planning Commission. Uh, I'm not gonna make that complaint, but I'm just saying that at some point, somebody will.
Yeah.
Because they're interacting with small children out there. And a couple of years ago, there was a, a woman that was hit by a dog out there, the ball broke her leg. So uh a lot of dogs like that, all it's gonna take is, is one deer to run through there, and they're all gone. And I mean, that's a lot of dogs, twenty-two dogs. So I think that uh when they close this park up the street, that everybody uh now and his brother's coming down to Turner Lane. But uh, you know, I like to see that going on out there, don't get me wrong. I used to have dogs myself and had the whole park to myself out there. But uh, that's um an ongoing issue right now because a, a lot of people don't like that.
There was also some discussion um from them about turning it into, I, I think that technically previously dogs weren't actually allowed in there, and so um they're making some distinction that it's officially a dog park now. Um, but they, that doesn't really mean a lot for us if, if Martin's Editions residents by and large aren't able to use it. Um.
You know, Matt, excuse me again, there are dog, professional dog walkers that come down and park in front of my house and then open up a big van.
They do what? They open a van?
A van.
Oh, van.
I love the dogs.
Yeah.
A clown car. Day between ten thirty and eleven o'clock, you'll see what I mean. That's when I start batting, batting down the hatches.
One or two dogs.
Yeah, Naomi.
Just a comment, uh, living on that block of Quincy Street.
Mm-hmm.
I don't experience directly what is happening in that dog park. But a neighbor of the street whose property does a butt, the proper, the dog park has to have rat um, uh, traps.
Hmm.
Remediation.
To capture the vermin that collects.
Okay.
So I just-
Through the, because of the net, the poop that goes on that is dispensed with. So just to-
The village's website just says it's redevelopment of the Brookville Road Park, including the establishment of a new dog park.
Yes, so I think what they're doing is, they are, i- in the center is going to be a dog, a dog because there was some concern from, I think, people that abut it, that the dogs were digging and, and it was affecting their, their property. So I think they're, they, they may end up putting another fence or, or something on the inside to sort of section off the part where dogs are supposed to go. And then uh surrounding it will be a, a, a park area for people to, to walk around without dogs.
Without dog poop, I mean, 'cause I think some of them complained has been that that whole park is just one big poop park.
Right. Yes. Right.
And that nobody cleans up. And the residents have been complaining about both the odor and the fact that the dogs can get under the fence or through the fence into their yards. Um, and so I think putting in a corral, so to speak, in the middle would really help the neighbors.
And a regulation that owners can pick up the poop.
Oh, my god, yeah.
Of course.
Matt, maybe if, if the village is willing to share any information, just what's it gonna be, how's it gonna be regulated, et cetera, so that we have it. Um, it looks like Ellen is their POC stands.
Okay, well, um, I'll get them to send over.
I mean, it's just something, we, we can't change, obviously, but it is something for us to be aware of and educate folks about.
Okay. Um, so, um. Ju- uh, so right after my, um, my report, you'll see that Joe Cutro um has done a traffic study and analysis on Quincy Street and Shepherd Street. Um, it may be useful to get Joe to come in at some point uh after he's done the other planned traffic studies on Cummings and Thornapple. Um, he's, I think he actually returned from a trip uh abroad today or yesterday. So um I'll touch base with him next week to get, get those moving. Um, but the, the gist of them um were that in comparison to Shepherd, um, there was less speeding and less traffic on Quincy. Um, now some, some residents have expressed uh a desire for perhaps a speed bump or something on Quincy Street. I don't know, I, I, I haven't had an opportunity to talk to Joe about whether or not that would be effective or what its effectiveness would be. Um, I, I, I seem to recall on Thornapple that the sp- the speed bump would, would maybe reduce speeds. I think he said some, somewhere a- along the lines of-
I'm not sure because he said the stop signs uh slow down the traffic and the speed bumps wouldn't be effective as effective because they're between stop signs. And so there wasn't sort of enough room for the car, you know, to really get going. I, but I have no memory or no reliable memory, so you could question that.
No.
Then his report also says that the median speed on Quincy is actually four miles below the speed limit. And the ninety-fifth percentile, so basically the highest speeders are traveling just six miles over the speed limit.
Right.
So they're speeding, no doubt, but not.
Not excessively.
Not, not excessively. Um, so uh, yeah, it might, it might be worth it to get more information from him. But yes, at, at first blush, it doesn't appear that there's um anything that is in dire need of, of immediate action.
Right.
On Shepherd, there, there was more speeding and, and higher traffic, over fifty percent of the traffic um was over the speed limit. Now, again, it would be interesting to hear what, what Joe has to say because there are already two speed bumps on Shepherd.
Right.
So that, um, I don't, I don't, I don't know what another speed bump would do, and I, I don't mean that negatively or positively. I, I truly don't know. Um.
But again, for residents benefit, right, so the median speed was twenty point nine miles an hour, so over the speed limit, but not much. And ninety-fifth percentile was at twenty-seven, so just seven miles over the speed limit.
Right. So we're not, yes, so again.
Although how somebody with speed bumps could get to thirty-seven miles an hour.
Well, thirty-seven was the highest observed, ninety-fifth percentile was twenty-seven.
Yeah, no, 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 I'm just saying this one, this one special person who must-
That was one special person.
Gunned it in between the speed bumps.
Yes, and I, more power to them uh as their gas bill goes up.
Uh, there was one other thing, I just, the weekly traffic comparison, he noted average daily weekly traffic from this round was seven hundred and twenty vehicles per day. We did this in two thousand eleven, same number, same process, it was seven hundred and fifty vehicles per day. So he's not seeing a statistically significant increase in the number of cars.
And that's a decline.
Yes.
I'm, I'm curious as to what, you know, if the speeds have changed. So I don't know if he did speed in two thousand eleven as well.
It says that he did, if you read the, yeah.
He did.
But we don't have the same charts.
So he's, he's saying that on Shepherd Street, um, this is in the warding section here, that they measured it on two locations the previous time it was measured, and they were both closer to speed bumps. So the speed bumps affected the speed, the readings more.
Mm-hmm.
This time they only set up one reading, but perfectly in the middle.
One in the-
So it should have had no impact from the speed bumps. And the readings are slightly higher, but not significantly, so.
Y- yeah, I think that's a, 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 a good point, um, because I think one of the reasons we were doing this is that there was a concern that there was more cut-through traffic on Shepherd.
Right, right.
Um, this is not, 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 not showing that. Um, there's no significant change in traffic and if anything, it's actually going down.
Mm-hmm, and the same at Quincy Street.
And, yes.
Uh, and I support that when the rest of the study is done on the other two streets, that it is indeed worthwhile for Joe to come and talk to us about it.
Okay, um, I, I had mentioned that to him and he, um, actually now that we're talking about it, I think he did come back yesterday from Portugal or Italy or something, so he was-
Right. Well, I think the next meeting that he could come to would be June.
Be June, right.
Right, and so that gives him plenty of time to complete those studies.
Yeah, and actually, um, he said that he wants to get them done because once you start to get into summer, the numbers might shift
Right.
'cause people are out of town and stuff, so, um.
Right. Agreed.
Before we wrap here, the intersection here, I see that, that we in section three are working a meeting with State Highway's District Engineer.
Yes, we actually had it yesterday.
Okay.
Um, so they have a new district engineer. Um, he said that they have, uh, so, so state, so just for a little bit of um background, um, state highway, the, the contractor that they had, their contract ran out at the end of March. Um, to me, they, I don't know why they didn't know that and anticipate that. Um, it could be that they were looking for a new district director- Um it could be that they were looking for a new district direct uh engineer so they, you know, that slipped through the cracks, I'm not sure. Um but in any case, the contractor um came back to them and said, we're not gonna do that work at the old negotiated prices. So they've had some back and forth, they met a couple of times. Um the district engineer did report that they've upped their um upped their quote or upped their prices or whatever so that the state highway is willing to pay a little bit more so they're they're still negotiating on that. Um I think they said by May, I I think it's May fourth but I can I'll double check on what what the date was when the they'll have a decision made on whether or not they accept the new terms. If if they do, uh they expect the work to be done in June. If not, they said probably October or November with the caveat that because of weather it could get pushed back to spring so then we're back on, you know, timeline that.
So I'd like for us to weigh in on that now before the May fourth meeting just to say a deadline that they've given us for us to say, we've been waiting for this for years.
Right.
You know, bad on you for whatever project and contract management you didn't do in the past. Please, you know, uh being appropriate stewards of our taxpayer dollars in the state, see if you can draw this through resolution.
Right.
Is that a fair?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, so I don't know what the best way for us to do that is, if it it's a letter that just says thanks for the meeting and here's what we think.
Yeah.
Um you know, if you guys have other ideas but I I would like for us to get something to them
Okay.
before this May fourth decision date.
Um I will draw something up and um I think probably as would you prefer the same along the same lines as this uh W WSSC work to come come from you, the council?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll draw something up for you and
Right, and to go to again, to go to the legislators
Mm-hmm.
so that there is some, you know, kick in the butt here.
We had give the new district engineer kind of a heads up since he's, you know, but hey, this is coming your way.
Right.
Yes, um I I
If we have counsel on any levers we can use to push them, I'd say we should try.
Okay. Um okay, I will draw something up and I'll um I'll double check that date but make sure that we get something in before before they
Okay.
Matt, um and Matt. I feel like I went long enough, so.
Thank you, any questions of Matt, any public comments, we're at the end of the meeting, Elizabeth.
Impressive.
I know. I would say darned impressive.
You guys are so entertaining.
I uh I just I'm I'm sorry I'm late, I missed the committee updates and I don't know if somebody had updated.
No, but you're welcome. Matt did.
He did, okay.
He updated on the Fourth of July and he updated um Arbor Day.
Arbor Day.
So it's it got covered.
Okay, sounds good.
Certainly, uh well, it's it's all covered, thank you.
Okay.
Any other comments? Keith?
Going back to the financial matters, I might have missed something, but this is number three eighteen two, you said it was three sixteen two. What did I miss there?
The um number on the
Financial matters for the uh
This was
We we didn't go over the financial matter, he was looking at the public hearing action on the policy, Keith, that's where he said two eighteen two.
Oh, the the tax the tax rate?
He said I assume you said it's two sixteen two, not twice.
Yes, you're loo you're looking
But on the sheet it says eighteen, but it may be I missed something.
Yeah, there's there's two different things, there's um the resolution for the tax rates.
Richard read
The wrong numbers.
Oh.
He read the correct number on the agenda, it's wrong for the election policy.
Oh, I wrote the wrong, I wrote the wrong thing on the agenda, oh, I see, okay, so
Yes.
Sixteen is the election policy.
Okay, well, thank you, all right.
Sorry.
The only other thing left is that I gotta promise you good weather next month on the tenth, right?
May tenth.
Yes.
Otherwise that analogy of the gas tanks, it might be in reverse. I might be the only one with the sugar on the door, so uh we're looking we're looking forward to nice weather, Marty.
Work out, Manu. Work out, Manu.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank all of you for coming, thank the committee for all your work. Meeting adjourned, oh, I guess I need a motion, a motion.
We need a motion.
Second.
All in favor, uh so